I could just force that out of my mind, refused to even think about it. Two years ago, I stopped having that ability and I was forced to start facing it and dealing with it and talking about it.
What was the first memory that surfaced then? What's the earliest experience?
I was around six years old. I'd been out playing by myself and I had my bike, which I was very fond of. It was my first bicycle. I'd got it when I was five. And some kids I didn't recognize, hadn't really seen the air before, invited me to go play with them in their fort. And it was supposedly underground and I climbed down inside and once I was in there, I realized that they weren't kids at all. And I was very frightened. But they reassured me that everything would be alright and I could just go look around. They would show me around. But what they did was led me into a room, put me on a table, take my clothes off and start an exam. And it's at that point that my memory faded until I was back in the entryway and they told me I could leave and it was time to go. And when I climbed out of the ladder, I was no longer at the north end of the neighborhood. I was right across the street from my house and my mother was standing there really wondering where I was and why I had left my bike clear at the other end of the block.
And there have been instances throughout the course of your life, that wasn't just the one instance?
No, it's been repeated. They'll come and make several visits, they'll be gone for several years and then they'll be back again for more.
How do you account for the failure on your part to remember this as it was going on? Why was it suppressed for so long?
I was very frightened. I realized very early on that they could manipulate me and they could keep control of me and that if they did decide to harm me, there was nothing I could do about it and I didn't want to see that come. I would quite often react like I tell people as an ostrich. I would stick my head in the sand, refuse to see or hear anything and it wasn't there because I couldn't see it.
Why are you so convinced that these experiences that you're remembering are indeed encounters with extraterrestrial beings?
Well, they're definitely not human beings and they definitely display technology that I've never seen before. And while I wasn't fighting to bring memories back, I have always been fighting to suppress them. It was things that I knew had happened to me all along. The only times I fought was when they actually showed up, I would just keep my eyes shut and not participate.
Do you understand that you came out of the ground near home, a block away from where you went in?
As I remember, as I crawled, you know, climbed up the ladder, when I was standing outside on the ground, I was, yes, across the street from my house, a block away. I had been under the impression that I was going underground.
What are these people, oh, people, I keep using the term people. What do these beings look like? I mean, are they...
Well, what I've seen is what many people describe as a standard gray. About five feet tall, 80 or 90 pounds, large eyes, all black, no hair. Heads seem a little bit disproportionately large as compared to a human being.
Do you get a sense of fear? Do you get a sense of peace? Do you get a sense of confusion?
Always fear. I was always terrified of them.
And why do you believe that these aren't something conjured up in your head as opposed to real experiences? What led you to that conclusion?
Well, you know, there are dreams and there is reality. I'm as certain that I am looking at you and talking with you as I have been that I have been looking at them and talking with them. There is no doubt, it is definite experience that I have been through. It's not something that I think happened to me or I kind of maybe has a fuzzy recollection of something that might have happened to me. It's as clear as driving down here today.
And excuse the layman's vernacular here, Dr. Mack, but for a while, you thought you were nuts.
When I could no longer suppress the memories, I was telling myself over and over, "God, let me be nuts. I don't want this to be happening. I don't want it to be real." And after several months of this frustration and not being able to deny all these experiences, I went and saw a psychologist. And after five months, the psychologist kicked me out, told me there was nothing wrong with me. I was just having anxiety because I didn't want to deal with what had actually happened to me.
You want to say something?
We're often told, well, these are people who want to believe this, but far from wanting to believe it, I've seen many people that come to me wanting to have a psychiatric diagnosis, wanting to be told that they have a neurosis or even a psychosis and become very disturbed when I say, "No, I don't understand this. You're having these experiences and I can't explain..."
They're looking for some other explanation.
It's what I call the anything-but syndrome. I went through it myself. I mean, I've looked at every other possible explanation as thoroughly as I can and nothing plausible has emerged. I might say, there is not in the literature, I always throw this out to audiences, there is not in the literature or among the reports, a single case of alien abduction experience that has revealed behind it upon examination, something else.
Okay. Let me introduce Cindy. Here's, picture this, this is 1987, driving down the freeway. What time?
About 11 o'clock at night.
At night. What do you see? You're heading south?
No, I'm going north towards Birmingham.
Heading north, okay.
A large craft that at first I thought was a Chinook helicopter, until I came closer to it.
So you're putting, I mean, you're watching it?
Oh, yeah.
Other cars around you?
There were no cars.
No cars, just you. At what point did you realize that, "Well, maybe this isn't a Chinook helicopter"?
Well, when I first noticed it, it was rather odd because there were lights lighting up in a circular motion sequentially around the craft. And I could tell that it was about 50 to 60 feet from the ground because of the treetop level. And it was right on the right side of the freeway. And as I came closer to it, I was doing this process of elimination. Could it be a dirigible? Well, a dirigible moves somewhat. It does not stay completely...
This was stationary?
It was completely stationary.
60 feet in the air?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm just trying to stay with you here.
So at that point, when I realized it was stationary and it was, I mean, just, it wasn't moving an inch.
Not a dirigible, obviously not a plane.
Not a plane, so it could only be, what, a helicopter? Possibly a stealth helicopter, you know?
No noise?
No noise. I rolled my window down and I had my music on at first. I turned the music on, off, and with it being that close to the ground, if it had been a helicopter, you would have heard something. You would have heard the disturbance of the air from the blades, even if it had been a stealth helicopter at that, that close to the ground, I would have heard something or felt some kind of vibration and there was nothing.
And then?
Then I came closer to it and I saw that it was a sphere. Sphere. It was probably 60 to 70 feet in diameter.
So at one point, was there a lapse in time here now?
No, as I came upon it, closer to it, I realized at that point, it was none of those things. And it was not a helicopter. And that it was obviously something not from here.
Without meaning to rush you, but because we are dealing with a limited...
I got ready to pull to the side of the road. I had made up my mind, I was going to pull over off the freeway and get out and take a look at it. I'm very conscious of my body position when I drive. I had my left hand on the wheel and this hand back here to look, to pull over and the next minute, I was driving like this. And I verbally said out loud to myself, "That was interesting." I never remember passing it. I was 10 miles down the road.
One thing I'd like to know, first of all, I get the feeling from the two so-called abductees, that you guys feel that you would love to have not had to think about this for a long time, right? Is that true? I mean...
Something that's troubled them?
Right, it's troubled you. And am I right in getting that impression?
For me, yes. I didn't want to deal with it all the time growing up. I was too frightened.
Right, and for the other lady?
I'm a little bit different. I was really disturbed for a couple of months because I couldn't put a bunch of things together.
Right, I think the disturbing element seems to pervade, at least in whole or in part. And that's why I really can't figure out what Dr. Mack is up to. Because I don't...
What do you think he's, what you call up to?
Okay. He wants this to be either an investigation or therapy, but as therapy, it seems that as you prime people through the regression therapy, it seems that there are more and more elements that come out and instead of these, of the symptoms or whatever one calls it in this case, lessening, they seem to worsen.
Okay, let's, let's...
So what's happening here?
Can you address that?
Yeah, very briefly. In spite of the fact that the people that have come to me know that they're going to encounter some disturbing memories when they come up, they feel that they have a major part of their life that they're not in touch with and people don't like that. They don't want to feel there's a whole secret life that they've been through that they can't get to. So what happens is, yes, there are some very disturbing things that happen in the hypnosis sessions, memories come back that are sometimes overwhelmingly intense and disturbing, but as they come to grips with those memories, they become much more solid, sure of themselves. They feel that they have an ally in me. They meet other people who've been through the experiences. They feel less cut off and isolated. And the overall effect is a constructive one. So it's like going through the dark night of the soul in a sense, but coming to a place of making peace with the experiences.
We'll continue, let's find out more about the therapeutic value of what your question was kind of addressing. And also, when we come back, you know, there are those who say that people's imaginations can sometimes really blur reality in a moment. A man who says that these experiences people are talking about are no more than figments of their imagination. Stay with us, we'll be right back.
Aliens or extraterrestrials or something unexplainable, not of this world, in the house, they took me out of the house and up into a ship.
Welcome back to Town Meeting. Our special guest tonight is Dr. John Mack. What we're talking about are alien abductions, experiences that people say they have had with extraterrestrial beings. And on that note, we have someone on the line. Thanks for your patience. Go ahead, you're on Town Meeting.
Hi, this is for Dr. Mack. What are the most common or consistent physical descriptions of the aliens that people have encountered?
There are four or five most common types. There are the so-called little grays who have, are three and a half to four feet tall, sometimes a little taller, big, large eyes, no ears, no hair, sort of pear-shaped heads, thin bodies. Sometimes there's a somewhat taller gray who's the leader or doctor seen on the ship. Then there are kind of reptilian ones that have scales that seem to be very functional and are rather scary looking, sometimes described as looking like praying mantises. Then there are tall luminous ones that are, don't necessarily, aren't necessarily solid, which have a kind of more spiritual mission, often six, seven feet tall. Then there are humans or more human-like beings that work along with the grays on the ship. And others have seen all kinds of other beings too, but that's just a brief capsule of the more common ones.
Well, I'd like to ask the abductees if they were asked questions about themselves, their country or the world? Was there anything like that?
I remember sometimes I was questioned as to where I was going, what I was doing. Other than that, no. Most of the times after I was on the ship, I was so terrified, I would blank everything out. I wouldn't even open my eyes.
Cindy, do you remember?
I wasn't asked anything, I was shown something.
What were you shown?
They took me up in the ship and took me away to show me something. I prefer not to tell what it is.
Okay.
This phenomenon looks to me like contact with a technologically superior culture. It strongly parallels our interaction between our scientists and wildlife. I don't see why people go to such great lengths to explain it away.
Is that, have you drawn that kind of comparison?
Because I don't, I want to, I want to explore why, something that's, I mean, whatever you may think it is, it seems to me there's so much evidence that something is going on here that we can't explain. Why is this treated with such fear, derision, ridicule often in the culture? I mean, I think, I don't understand that myself.
I'd like to ask the experiencers, how you deal with the really intense cultural denial that's there all the time? How does it affect your life? I work with people...
Culturally denying?
Culturally denying that it's happening, that this whole ET experience is happening.
Dave Jones, new to the program here. Let me briefly explain. Dave is also from this area and you say that you have had your own experiences with extraterrestrial...
I'm not from this area.
I'm sorry, then.
I'm from the Midwest.
Excuse me. Well, you look like you should be from this area.
Yeah, okay.
You have that rough, new beard.
I feel like I belong here, you know? But I would like to answer that because in my job, you know, first of all, in going, I've been with Dr. Mack for two years. And in the two years that I've worked with him and going through my experiences, one of the things I've always told John is, "I don't want my name mentioned anywhere." Well, then, I got to meet people in the support group, I got to find out more about what actually happened to me. I want to tell you something about this man that's sitting next to me. He went down to my farm in Missouri and met with my mom and dad, which was the most emotional experience that I ever had. A ship landed on the farm. It was very difficult to deal with. It was very frightening. We had dairy cattle that went through barbed wire fence. We had dogs that were frightened. That was a morning that we never forgot. But one thing we were told was not to talk about it because, this was back in 1962, we were told you would be classified as an idiot. People will not believe that you saw what you saw, even though there was a 30-foot circular burnt mark in the wheat field where it landed.
So you think people like Dr. Mack are helping lend acceptance or bring acceptance to this whole experience?
Oh, he's the pioneer. And I tell you, one thing I want to talk about, I work with doctors and I work with hospital administrators in my job. And one of the questions, I just recently did some, I came out and I decided to come out because there's other people that I have met that's had this experience. But they're so scared to come out because they're afraid of what the people's consciousness is going to think of them.
Well, let me, this may be a seemingly inappropriate time to introduce Dr. Barry Beierstein, who's from Simon Fraser University up in Vancouver, British Columbia. You've dealt with people who feel that they have had these types of experiences as well. You've reached a different conclusion than Dr. Mack has.
Yes, a very different one. I believe they've had experiences and they're telling me something that seemed profoundly real to them. I have no doubt with that at all. Now, the question is, did they experience something that happened outside them or is this something that happened in the theater of their own minds? And what our research and lots of other research in experimental psychology says is, our brains are capable of generating extremely real experiences of this sort that don't have anything to do with the world outside of us, but come from our memories and our hopes and our desires, their psychological processes. It's a total false dichotomy to say either they're correct or they're crazy. That's not the only opportunity. Normal people who are not crazy can be terribly mistaken. I mean, our senses generate these kinds of experiences and you don't have to say that somebody is nuts if they've had this kind of experience. I don't say that. I say they've had an experience and I say we know something about brain mechanisms that can generate those kinds of experiences.
What about physical evidence? I mean, I know of a girl that woke up with section cut marks surrounding her whole body all the way around.
There's a long history of stigmata, of people's attitudes causing bodily changes as far as scars are concerned. This very morning, as I was getting dressed to come here, my wife said, "Where did you get that cut on your side?" And I said, "What cut?" And I looked in the mirror and sure enough, I had quite a large cut there. And I said, "I have no idea where that came from. I must, I must have, I must have done it sometime."
All right, let's...
So it's possible to have all kinds of marks on your body that have nothing to do with being abducted or anything else.
Well, who knows? You may have that repressed memory syndrome and, but, but Dr. Mack, can you respond because there is a, there is a good point of view represented here held by a lot of credible people and around the country, in Vancouver and in the United States that say the same thing?
No, I think, can I call you Barry?
Certainly.
I think what Barry's saying reflects the response a lot of people have when they hear about this and even begin to look into it. What's different though is that the cuts, the scoop marks, the lesions that show up on people's bodies, unlike the stigmata, have no relationship, as far as I can tell, to the personal dynamics, the wishes he was talking about, the feelings, the psychology. In fact, they bear no relationship to that person's psychodynamics. In other words, it's not something that fits into their psychology or any pattern that I've been able to discern.
Excuse me, but Ken, we've got a problem here. I'm a lawyer and I'm used to grilling witnesses on the stand. I know they can make up stories that are so incredible that you wouldn't believe it. And you're saying theory doesn't prevent facts from happening, but what we're talking about is stories. And both the people on your left there give us stories. Now, this young man goes into a hole in the ground, a cave, and he comes up right in front of his house. There's nothing about his mother saying, "It's bizarre, there's a hole across the street. Call in the police. Look, there's a hole here. Half of the block fell in. A whole string of dirt fell in with this hole that happened there." That's all missing. You see, that's a problem here.
Ken, I want to respond to this, please. For many of us who have had experiences and mine aren't identical to Dan's and many of the abductees, but our recounting of what happened to us is for people who have an open mind. We are not, I am not, I can speak for myself, I am not personally trying to convince anybody. I'm not trying to get them to change their mind for people whose minds are already open or they've had something happen to them. This is another story for them to compare.
Let me go back to Dr. Beierstein here then. Is the fact, are you to be more receptive or do they need, who's the burden of proof lie with here?
The burden of proof is always on the claimant, but we have to say, I mean, I'll reiterate, I believe these people have had experiences, but I believe they're generating them themselves. That's what a hallucination is.
But that's your opinion.
It is a brain-generated...
And we're not trying to convince...
We can generate, we can do these in the laboratory.
But we are not trying to convince people like you.
We can create them. We know the conditions under which we need to set up things to make this happen.
But that's your opinion. That's your receptive.
Excuse me, please explain to me how your mind can generate a burn pattern out in your yard, out in the field.
Tell me the burn pattern.
There are many documented burn patterns.
We've got many of them.
You haven't researched.
No, everyone I've gone to look at has had a totally positive explanation.
You've got to read the books, you've got to...
All right, here's the deal. I think we've now leapt to the point that this gentleman up there brought us to before and that is in terms of physical evidence. When we come back, what are the distinctive physical things that people can point to, look to and touch that will justify everyone being more open-minded and willing to accept the possibility of this? Where's the hard evidence? We'll talk about it when we come back. Stay with us.
Next week on Town Meeting, can we act to save the symbol of the Pacific Northwest? Experts say the region's once abundant salmon runs are all but decimated, bringing us to the brink of an ecological disaster. As an icon, a recreation and an industry, the salmon will not survive without immediate action. For tickets to this program, give us a call at 443-4186.
All right, thank you. Welcome back to Town Meeting. Joining us on the phone right now is clinical psychologist out of San Diego, Dr. William Cohn. I want to thank him for joining us. Is that a busy signal or are you with us, Dr. Cohn? We'll get to him in a moment here then. Let's pick up where we left off and that is the physical evidence. What would you require in terms of physical evidence to sway you or be convinced that some of this was taking place?
One thing that would be pretty impressive, I mean, if these entities exist and they are as technologically advanced as people say they are, they should be able to give just one single piece of evidence, answer to a serious scientific problem that we have no conceptual means of dealing with right now. Or look, I mean, this watch, 30 years ago, if somebody had shown up with it, it could not have been produced on this planet. I mean, and now, of course, it's a trivial thing. Any little thing like that would be suspicious.
Has it ever occurred to you to attempt to achieve or communicate in this fashion to try to get some sort of supportive evidence that would lend more credibility to your story?
No, that was never an instinct of mine. For most of my life growing up, I didn't want to deal with it. I'm at the point now where I really don't care if somebody doesn't believe me, but I have run into some very negative people who don't believe and they've been very insultive to some other people that I've known. And I would ask them that, "You don't believe, that's fine. If you believe this person has a mental problem, that's fine, but direct them to where they can get help. Don't add to their problems by making them feel bad."
Let me take on the physical evidence. Well, hold on. Cindy, how about you? Has it occurred to you to request some sort of physical evidence to substantiate?
No, because it doesn't make any difference to me. I accept what happened to me. And if other people want to hear my story about my encounter and my interaction, I'm more than happy to share that with them.
Dave?
Well, on the physical evidence, I'll give you just one example of something that recently happened to me this fall. I'd been out playing golf early in the morning. I came in and for the last three days, there'd been a loose piece of skin in my mouth. And when I looked, it's on the bottom of my mouth, when I looked at it, it was just a white piece of skin across. So what I did, I took a pair of tweezers and got a hold of the loose piece of skin and I pulled it. When I pulled it, the whole bottom side of my mouth just came wide open. Blood just gushed out.
Dave, this is a great story.
Well, I'm going to tell you something. If they want physical evidence, they're going to, they're going to hear it.
But I think, I think what we were referring to more than some type of a wound or...
But listen to the story. Listen to what happened. I mean, because when I went through the regression, I found out what happened. I was taken aboard a ship. I was put on a table. They cut my mouth open. They took a small gray object out, which had been against down in the bottom of my mouth, which I always thought was part of my gum. For a long, for all my life, I thought it was. Today, that's gone.
Okay. Dr. Mack, what about x-rays?
Let me take on this physical evidence question, okay?
Coming in.
There is physical evidence, okay? There is the lesions on people's bodies like Dave is describing. There is the burned earth. Many cases that have been documented, you can just deny it, but there's Linda Howe, many other people have got photographs, have demonstrated that this exists. There are pregnancies that have disappeared, not proven medically, okay? There is shared experience around, there are people actually witnessed to be missing during the time that the abduction is reported and I have several of these cases. Now, this is the, this is the thing I want to get across here. I've come to, oh, then the implants, a number of implants have been analyzed. I thought that was going to be the smoking gun. I was looking for the smoking gun too. But, and those, when analyzed, do not demonstrate some bizarre set of metals that are not found on Earth. What I've come to is that this phenomenon has some subtleties to it, okay? Let me just finish the point here.
Hold on, but we got Dr. Cohn here and I want to get him on this as well. Can you do it real quickly?
Yes. I see this thing, I think we're stuck in a certain place that nothing is real unless it's in our physical world. This may not come from this physical world. This may be asking us to open to some larger realities, okay? To constantly try to force every human experience back into the box of the world that we as fuck to ourselves.
Let me use that to serve as an introduction to Dr. Cohn, who's joining us by phone from San Diego. San Diego clinical psychologist, thank you for joining us. Let me, in the way of brief background here, you have also dealt with people who say that they have had experience with extraterrestrials?
That's right.
What is the majority of the cases in, what have you found?
Well, I've, I've found a lot of things very similar to Dr. Mack. I've found a lot of people that report being taken aboard the craft, being subjected to medical examinations, having objects placed or removed from their body, things of that nature.
What has your conclusion been?
Well, two things. One is I have some people that, like Dr. Mack, I think are very credible people. I have also two subsets of people that I feel, one subset is clinically medically ill, they have delusional disorders. Also, I think there's a lot of people that are mistaken about these disorders and I come to that conclusion through a lot of work I've done with satanic ritual abuse victims and so-called multiple personalities and child abuse memory people.
Have you come to a point where any of the people that you have spoken with, where you will accept their explanation for what's happened to them in respect, in terms of having extraterrestrial contact?
Well, I think it would be presumptuous of me to say that these people are not telling the truth, that they're lying because I wasn't there.
But do you believe them?
Well, I have no reason to disbelieve them. However, what I'm saying to you is there's a lot of people that have had these experiences, or say they have, that I believe have not. And I think that number is growing, just like the problem we're having with satanic abuse and child abuse memories.
Yeah, hi. I've been a special consultant to the Time Life series on the paranormal, just briefly. And I think there are two kinds of cultural denial going on. We mentioned cultural denial. The other part of the cultural denial is that this has been proliferating through our society now for some 30 or 40 years. And I'm surprised that Dr. Mack is surprised that these stories tend to coincide and that they tend to have similar kinds of features. Because that's how folklore operates. You had this kind of thing going on in the 17th century, with the witch kind of things, demon possession, and these sorts of things. Folklore is an extremely powerful thing, and it tends to impact people's lives.
Do you think people are feeding off of stories that they've heard? Is that, or contributing to the urban legends as...
I think that they maybe...
Wait, wait, no, no, no.
Okay, one more time, hold on.
There is a fallacy here, that all of the facts are out. All the elements in the abductees' experiences are out in the public. They are not...
All right, I'll tell you what. Hold on. Let's regroup here real quickly. When we come back, we will talk about what the facts are, what people perceive them to be, mix everything that we have gotten together with at this point, and bring it to some sort of logical closure. Stay with us, we'll be right back. Are you someone who's been on dozens of diets, spent hundreds, if not thousands, of dollars to lose weight, only to gain it all back? If diet programs have been a disaster for you, we'd like to talk to you. Give us a call at 443-8272. Thanks for staying with us. Go ahead.
I would just like to know, when you're talking about physical evidence and stuff like the crop circles that have been over in England now since 1975, we've got all kinds of physical evidence that something is causing this. Regardless of the two old men that said they were doing it with a piece of wood and a string. But it's going on, and what's causing it? There's been no answers. The people that disbelieve in a possibility of this going on, where is your evidence to base your disbelief on? Instead of just saying, "No, it's not possible," how can you say...
But here, Dr. Beierstein says, empirically, it is the claimants that have to have the proof.
That's correct. In any scientific study, if you're claiming something that can't not be demonstrated physically, it is my burden, if I want to convince you, I have to come up with the proof. And that is absolutely correct in any science we study.
So you've just said, "I no longer want to prove."
I never really was trying to prove. And that is, we're dealing with experiences here. And there's lots of evidence from empirical studies all over the place that people can be deluded into producing just this kind of phenomenon. I mean, that's proof of a different sort.
The man in the front who said that this is basically from folklore because people are seeing things in books and on TV that are similar stories. Well, how come there are hundreds of car chase movies everywhere and people don't say that they've seen car chases or that they've imagined car chases? It doesn't seem to make sense.
Because nobody would pay any attention to them if they did.
Why do people see crimes on television and not report them?
This is a selection phenomenon.
Go ahead, Cindy.
And I also want to say, I've been a nurse for 20 years, so I have a medical background. I am also an astrophysics major at the University of Washington. I am near completion of that degree. So I have an academic background that also helps me make some discernment here as far as what I personally have been through. And I have also worked with other abductees. And I will stress this again. This is not to try to prove to people who want proof because they don't want to believe it or who are fearful of it. We are advocating what we've been through so other people who have been through it can have a dialogue with us.
But let me ask Dr. Mack, with what you've chronicled in the book, in some respects, you are attempting to prove that these events have happened. Wasn't there more in terms of a base for you to offer some sort of proof in than has been offered?
I review the physical evidence. I think the physical evidence is there. It's corroborative. It backs up the experiential evidence. But how do we decide what's true or what's real, except on the basis of shared experience? That's how we decide, agreement in a culture that something is real, that something is powerful. We could say these people are, that this is a product of imagination, but it doesn't work like that. These are not matters that any of these people want to have be true. These are very disturbing experiences to them that they themselves reject.
Well, I'll tell you what, we're going to take a quick break. When we come back, what does it all mean? Where do we go from here? And what do you want to take with you out of this whole program? Stay with us, we'll be right back. Town Meeting guests enjoy the sweet life at the Marriott Residence Inn on Lake Union in downtown Seattle. Go ahead.
You're talking about physical evidence. What about the evidence about the Air Force hangar where all the aliens, where they got like the three aliens, life, the bodies of the three aliens, the hangar 18...
Government cover-up.
Yeah, the government cover-up that has alien spaceships and alien bodies.
It's a total hoax. It's been disproved a dozen times.
I'm sorry, but it is not a hoax.
Oh, yes, of course. I mean, the signatures on the memos were shown to have been copied off. Harry Truman's memos are something totally different. The typewriter that those documents were typed on wasn't even manufactured until years after the events that they talk about supposedly took place. That's a hoax.
But let's deal, rather than take the issue, let's deal with the level of skepticism. Because people, you know, in some respects, they want to believe this but have not been given anything that will help them to believe it.
But Ken, and I appreciate this man's position, but what I want to hear from are more people like myself. I did seven years of my own personal investigation into certain phenomenon, into bases that were alleged to be below ground in certain states. And I can tell you that I found out some interesting things.
But deal with what you know. I mean, you believe your experiences are real. You're not going to be swayed or convinced that they have somehow been...
Absolutely. But I don't want...
Dan, the same with you.
I don't want people like him's...
It would have to be the same thing, you know? To convince the good doctor here that I'm telling the truth, I've got to come up with some hard evidence. And if he can come up with the same evidence to show me I'm wrong, I would gladly accept it.
I didn't get to finish the story while I go, but for the attorney, for evidence? My internist who saw this in my mouth could not explain it. He said it had to be cut by a very highly sharp surgical device.
All right. What do we left with, Dr. Beierstein, from your perspective?
Well, one thing I definitely want to get into this debate is the absolute fallibility of hypnosis. Hypnosis is an invitation to fantasy and confabulation. And as far as evidence is concerned, and I can't stress strongly enough how much evidence there is, that hypnosis is a bad way to try to validate any of these things. Because the people who are best able to be hypnotized are the best people at confabulating and fantasizing.
First of all, wait a minute. This is simply a thrown-out, you're just throwing that out without modifying this statement. 25 to 30% of these experiences are without hypnosis. When the matter is of core importance to the individual, that is deeply traumatic...
You stand by it. I need you because we're out of it.
Deeply traumatic, hypnosis is a valid instrument. It is a traditional way of recovering memories in many, many ways.
Dave, Dr. Mack, Cindy, Dan, Dr. Beierstein, please join me in thanking all of the people who helped participate and bring some. This is a tough issue. Either you do or you don't. Somewhere along the line, maybe you will. Here's what we've got coming up on the agenda for next week. We now stand at the edge of what could be one of the worst ecological disasters of the century, losing the salmon, the icon of the Pacific Northwest. Experts say unless we act quickly, the question of who will catch the last salmon becomes a very real one. Salmon are on the verge of extinction. What, if anything, can be done to renew this important and valuable resource? If you'd like to be in our audience for this program, give us a call at 443-4186. All right, tomorrow afternoon, Dr. Mack, Northwest Afternoon. You'll be able to see it right here with Dick Foley and Alisa Jaffe. I want to thank you for having watched tonight. Ask that you please take care. Have a good week. Hear more from Dr. John Mack when he appears live on Northwest Afternoon. That's Northwest Afternoon tomorrow at 3.